You good to go now? All right. All right, we're gonna get this meeting going. Welcome everyone to the Thursday, April 1st, 2021, meeting of the Hummel County Planning Commission. And as has become too common, we're doing this virtually and in accordance with Executive Order N-29-2020, the Planning Commission meeting will be held virtually. Go on the county website and you can get directions as how to join us via computer or by phone. And with that, I will call this meeting order and ask everybody to join me in a salute to the flag, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of United States of America and to the Republic, where we stand, one nation, under God, in the middle of the world. Thank you, everyone. And I would ask for a roll call, please. Present.
Thomas Mulder. Thomas Mulder. Noah Levy.
Here.
Mike Newman.
Present.
Peggy O'Neil.
Here.
Brian Mitchell.
Present.
And Melly McCabber.
Here.
Thank you. It looks like we have a quorum. So Director, do we have any agenda modifications?
Mr. Chair, thank you. We do have a couple of supplementals. I apologize. They came out today. Those supplementals are for item D, or I'm sorry, H1 for the Petri Road older projects. There is a revised resolution. We will walk through the change in language. It really has no substantial changes. There are just some things that we wanted to clean up. And then the other item is item G1, the Arcade of Land Company. The applicant has asked for our continuance. And we would recommend a continuance to a date certain. However, one of the things I want to bring up to the commission as you consider that is that on April 15th, which is the next meeting date, we have 18 items already scheduled. And so I would prefer not to disrupt that flow. And I was wondering if the commission would be willing to consider a special meeting.
Would you like to talk about that now or when we get to it?
We can do it when we get to it.
Thank you, Director. Was that everything?
Yes.
All right. Thank you, Director. So we'll talk about that when we get to that item.
Let me add, Thomas Mulder just arrived.
Excellent. Welcome, Thomas. Okay, so now we're at part D, which is public comments. And this is the point when anybody can talk about anything they want to that is not on the agenda. So with that, I will look at Looks like we have two. So the first speaker will be Sean Armstrong, please.
Hello, this is Sean Armstrong. I live here at 1887 Q Street out here in the county in Arcata. Hello, tomorrow night at 6:30, Lane DeVries has asked if he can meet with 10 community members as a part of the continuance.
Sir, sir, this is something that's agendized for tonight.
Well, I realize I'm just gonna go make dinner. So I'm just trying to make an announcement that we'll have a meeting so that we can help you guys work through all the conflicts. At 6:30 tomorrow night, I'll try to, I'm trying to get 10 people just, he's asked to have that meeting. And so just, you know, that's what we're doing.
Thank you. Thank you. Next caller is Public 7454. Star 6, unmute yourself, please.
Hello, Ken Sawatsky, can you hear me?
Yes, hey, Kent.
I'm calling from Gate G3 at LAX, and I thought I'd participate a little bit in this meeting. I wish to, I wish to bring forward some thoughts on the general plan in general. And there were some, I don't know how many of you attended as many meetings as I and some of the other people did, but there were some overriding major concerns that were brought forward. And one was to preserve prime ag soils. This was to be converted at last resort to something else. Like, that was one thing that was major. And the other thing was to direct people who might have commercial ventures onto the brownfield sites, which we have many wonderful brownfield sites that aren't being used, some of which do have cannabis permits on them, but they're very large sites. So you might find them 75 or 100 acre sites. And of course cannabis, as we've seen, maybe seven acres is the biggest. So I would always look toward melding those two concepts together. And let's just say you had somebody that had a compatible use with the cannabis and get those people to work together. And of course, a prime example of that would be somebody who has a project that generates energy and a project that needs energy. And of course, a lot of these cannabis projects do need energy or they desire to have the energy. Perfect marriage. On the other hand, I strongly recommend you always look at the conversion of ag soils to something that shouldn't necessarily have those compatible benefits. And take, take those with a grain of salt, no matter whether you're doing a conditional use permit or anything. But I don't, I just wanted to bring that to your attention because those were some of the major concerns and desires that were in the general plan. And so just always look at those from those particular viewpoints. Hopefully, some of these projects will work well together. We will repurpose our, our brownfield. So thank you for my opportunity to speak.
Thank you. Have a safe flight home.
I'm leaving.
Oh, leaving. Have a safe flight wherever.
Mexico.
Good for you. All right. Thank you, Kent. Okay, anybody else from the public that would like to comment on anything that is not on the agenda tonight? A second. All right, see and none. I will close the public comment section and we will move to the consent agenda. And as usual, we will go through the consent agenda. And anything that we will pull any item that anybody from the public or the commission wants and leave everything else on the consent agenda. So the first item is review and approval of the March 18th, 2021 action summary. Anybody that would like this pulled? See and none. I will leave that on consent. Go to item number two, which was ancient truth LLC conditional use permit in the Bloxburg area. Is there anybody that would like this item pulled? I'm seeing one attendee, so we will pull item number two. Next item is item number three, which is the Allen and Sharon Parks Final Map subdivision modification and extension in the McKinleyville area. Is there anybody who has concerns on this item? See and none. I will leave this on consent. Item number four is the Green Tech Industries LLC in the Redway area. Anybody concerned on this one?
No, but I believe, yeah. That item is being continued.
Yeah, you're right. You're right. I just didn't remember that. Thank you, Director. Thank you. Continue, June 15. All right. And then that would be it on the consent agenda. So we have items number one. Item number three, that would be on the consent agenda. The other two items, we pulled. So do I with the consent? Okay, so it's actually item number two, one. Item number one, item number three, and item number four that would be on consent. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll motion to approve this consent calendar.
And I'll second it.
And Peggy is the second. So we discussion. See and none. I will ask for a roll call vote, please.
Alan Bongio.
Yes.
Thomas Mulder.
Yes.
Noah Levy.
Yes.
Mike Newman.
Affirmative.
Peggy O'Neil.
Yes.
Brian Mitchell.
Yes.
And Melanie McCabber.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimous. Okay, so the first item or the only item that we had polled on consent was ancient truth LLC conditional use permit. So I would pick a staff report on that, please.
Thank you, Alan. Can everyone hear me all right?
Yes, thank you.
Good evening. May I please have permission to share my screen?
Yes, you can.
All right.
Please do.
All right, just checking that everyone can see the PowerPoint slide?
Yes.
All right. Good evening, everyone. My name is Sarah Ferola. I am a planner with Harrison Associates. And today I'm going to be talking about ancient truths. And the conditional use permit that we are trying to provide today. So here is a picture of the project area. The project is off of Sylvan Grade Road. It is zoned as forestry recreation combined with special building area. The land use designation is residential agriculture. And the parcel is 40 acres. The scope of the work today is to permit an existing outdoor light deprivation cultivation. That is a total of 11,430 square feet. And it's broken into four different cultivation areas, greenhouses, that will be shown in the site plan in the next slide. Oh, excuse me. Sorry, I thought I heard a comment. Irrigation is provided by an onsite permitted well. Water use is estimated annually to be 144,450 gallons. And water is stored in seven hard tanks for a total of 9,700 gallons. And power is provided by an onsite generator that is 25 kilowatts. And there were a couple of issues identified through analysis of the project that were written into conditions of approval. They included four cultivation areas that were located within the streamside management area buffer. And the applicant has already proposed a relocation of these, shown in the site plan, that will be shown in the next slide to outside of the streamside management area. And the access road has various remediation measures that are outlined in the site management plan. And they generally include rocking and armoring all locations that are showing sense of erosion. An LSAA has been filed for the project to remediate stream crossings within the project area, which include rocking to help erosion. And there are a couple of culverts that need to be upgraded to allow for larger flow events. And by the end of 2025, the power source will need to be upgraded from generator use to a more sustainable source. I hope you all can see this. This is the site plan that on the left-hand side shows the current location of the greenhouses. And there are a couple, the, who do I want to say this? The two on the most western edge are being put into this little area, more in the central. Oh, excuse me. They're moving from the eastern edge to the western, more southern. And that's just to take the cultivation activities outside of the streamside management area. And aid with the water quality potential there. So that. And California Environmental Quality Act addendum was prepared alongside the staff report. And there were no substantial impacts found besides the issues identified in that conditions of approval and no new information there. We recommend that the staff adopt the resolution to approve the permit for ancient truth farms to continue the use of the 11,430 square feet of cannabis cultivation. And I'm happy to answer any questions that the public or the commission has. Thank you.
Thank you. Do any of the commissioners have questions for staff on this?
I do.
Go ahead.
Could you speak a little bit more on the well and how many hours a day that generator is going to be in use to pump water? You don't talk about the capacity of the well, how many gallons per minute? How many hours a day? Is it a propane generator, gas generator?
To the generator, I believe it is a gas generator. And for the well, the limit to my understanding is the let me just cross check here. The standard that I believe I referenced in this was the, I'm sorry, I'm having a hard time finding it at this second. Sorry, I need a moment to find this number to answer your question. I'm sorry, I'm having a hard time finding that right now. When it isn't identified in the well log, I've been using the cannabis policy limit that I believe is 1,400 gallons per day. And I can amend this report to include that. But as of right now, I'm not finding that information because it's not included in our report.
Maybe the applicant knows and they can tell us later, but I was just curious because it was, there was a comparison to other permits that we have approved and we don't often approve a well that's run by a generator. So I was curious about how, how long they needed to run the generator to pump the water that they need for the 144,000 gallons or whatever it was a year.
Okay.
For five years is, for four years, whatever the deadline was, and there was a reasonable amount of time to do a conversion. And if they did do a conversion, what would it be? If it was a solar pump, would it, would that, is there a solar pump that can pump that amount of water? I don't know the answer, so. But we just kind of go on this, oh, well, just do this later kind of stuff. And we don't really nail it down.
Yeah, I don't have the answer to that right now if the applicant is on. And if not, then I can
Let, let other people ask their questions. I don't want to take all the time.
Okay.
Okay, we'll try and come back to the applicant when we get to the public and at the end of the public. So Mike, you've had your hand up. And then Thomas after Mike.
Yes, thank you. My question was for Sarah. How are you connected on this? I don't, you know, why is county staff not on this?
In terms of writing the report or this well question?
If, if, if I could. Commissioner Newman, thank you for the question. One of the things that we have done in order to attempt to finish cannabis applications by the end of the year. And also to catch up with some of the backlog in the current planning realm is we have sent, we've hired consultants to work as staff. So Sarah is, works for Harrison Associates. They're one of the consultants that we hired. They are functioning in the capacity of staff right now.
Okay, I, I just had not heard that identified. So that was my main question there. And then she said, seemed so tentative on some things there. So that's part of my questioning about this.
No, understand she is, this is, I don't know if she's done presentations elsewhere. This is her first presentation for us, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Thomas, go ahead.
My question is on the condition of approval number 20. It says the applicant shall obtain a permit to operate the single onsite generator 25 KW from the North Coast Unified Air Quality Management District and obtain an electric permit from the county building department. This would be for staff. As far as I know, North Coast Air Quality Management District, you only have to register a generator if it's over 50 horsepower. And to my understanding of 45 KW is that cutoff. And if I'm wrong, I've just, or if those rules have changed, I'm just trying to get some clarification there on that one.
So I, I think I'll, I'll just jump in. That satisfies two things, Commissioner Mulder. One is that if they do stay below that threshold, then they don't need a permit. But if they happen to expand the generator at some point, then they're on notice that they need to have that permit.
Okay, that makes total sense. I just was, I thought maybe there was a rule change. That's why I asked. Thank you.
Any other commissioners that have questions for staff before we open this up for public comment? See and none. I will now open up public comment. I did see one hand, so. I'm gonna go to public comment, like not being able to open up the panelists. So the first commenter is Steve Rentonstein. I hope I didn't representative. Okay, I'm not seeing any, well, there is three, but I'm not. Okay, I'm sorry. Finally switched over. So three, I got three. And the first one would be Kent.
So I just want you to know, I did not pull this from consent. I appreciate the staff report. I don't know if someone hadn't pulled it. I didn't hear any of the commissioners pull it, but there's been questions from at least three commissioners, if not four, on this. So anyway, I did, I did have some of the same concerns regarding the generator for this. And I guess the question you might want to ask the staff member, your consultant staff member, is how deep that well is because my experience is that if it's not a terribly deep well, and even then it can be sized, you can get solar pumps relatively inexpensive that will easily handle that volume and then quite a bit more. So, so I don't know why this generator is being allowed to go out for such a long time period. I'd like to see a study on this one. It sounds like maybe this project should be tabled and we have some more competent answers on that particular topic. The other thing is it wasn't mentioned by staff or the consultant, whether this was hydrologically connected to any other water sources or if studies had been done. And one thing I'd like to see in the future is especially on generated or using electric power, that PG&E bills be submitted if it's PG&E power to show that when the well is being used and what volumes, power is being used. That's one way you can check the thing rather than just a log that's done by the person. There's ways to do that with the generators also, especially a generator that size most likely has the ability or capacity to be wired with some form of metering. And I would also like to see forbearance. You know, there doesn't appear to be enough size for forbearance on this as far as storage goes. But any well, I think, should preferably be on a forbearance period, which I think was April 1st, which is that yesterday. Thanks for the opportunity to comment.
Next caller is Public 0749. Star 6, unmute. 0749, are you there? Star 6, unmute. Okay, I'll move on to the next caller, which is Becky Patterson.
Yes, hello.
Hello.
So I have three questions. One is, I know that a lot of times these big generators are well insulated. I live around the area and the sound where we live here travels incredibly. You wouldn't believe it. You think somebody's right in front of your house and the sound coming up the stream bed and they're far away. So if the sound does travel and neighbors are hearing this generator, will they be required to build like some kind of insulated structure around the generator to or pumps, if they have pumps, to deaden the sound? And I have two other questions.
Go ahead and ask all the questions and then those will answer at the end.
So the other one, are people are permitted, one, are they allowed to buy water? And two, do, do the consultants actually go out and measure the amount of water that's coming out of the well? Those are my questions. Thank you.
All right, thank you. So any other public that would like to speak at this point? I'm seeing 0479 still has their hand up, but we tried them and they didn't answer. So I'll give it one more try. Public 0479, are you there? Star 6, unmute. Okay, not seeing, they're not picking up or whatever. Maybe they decided not to speak. So I'm gonna close public comment well, and I'll let the director, if he wants to address those questions, or staff. Chairman Bongio, if I could just add, you do have the agent that you moved into the panel.
Analyst.
Hand up. Yeah, I, you want me to bring him up now? Okay, I'll do that. I was gonna wait till we move back. But so Steve, go ahead.
Hey, hi, everybody. Hi, I'm Steve Brittenstein. Work for Green Road Consulting. Here on behalf of the applicant, I thought I'd just answer some of the questions. So Here on behalf of the applicant, I thought I'd just answer some of the questions. So we've been pouncing around. The generator, current generator, twenty-five kilowatt is a gas generator. We most certainly can place it inside of a insulated building. As soon as we have our full entitlement, we can file building permits for that. And we'll make sure that it is quiet to fifty decibels at a hundred feet, no problem. The, in terms of the water from the well, we've got a water meter attached to the well there. So we will be able to monitor it and we can submit that information. We, we plan to record it on a monthly basis. And it'll be available as well as any, any tests that, that are asked of us for the well. We can have a geologist review it for hydrologic connectivity or what have you. We're totally open to that. We've done in the past. As far as the energy production, we most certainly can get a solar well pump on there to, to, that the pump is submerged in the well, so we can just get a solar panel standalone unit that will be able to carry that water up to the tanks up at the top of the property and feed all the cultivation areas. And that'll work fine. In terms of the total power use, the major power uses comes from the well pump and also the onsite drying of the cannabis to run the dehumidifiers. That energy use is, you know, a lot of it happens late in the season and it might take longer than, than just a few years to get a solar system installed to take over a hundred percent of the power use. Which kind of brings me to the condition of approval number nineteen. The dates in there are a little, I'm a little confused about them. It says to stop using generator power by the end of this year, but then says until twenty twenty-six to get a replacement power. I think maybe that should, those dates should be the same date when we should switch off of generator power. And if we are gonna come up with a date, I would, the applicant would certainly prefer a later one. In the meantime, we can definitely get, start getting power sources in to take care of the well pumps and what we can. But to get to a hundred percent renewable energy from, which is gonna have to be solar in this case, it's certainly gonna take a few years to, to get that installed. So I would ask that to be, to be modified. Any other questions you guys have, feel free to ask. I'm here.
So when was the well put in and don't you have like a well pumping test that tells how much it provides?
Oh, yes, we certainly do. We, we certainly don't pump the maximum of the well at any given time.
How, how, how many hours a day do you have to run the generator to pump the water that you need?
That, I don't have the calculations on that. I, it, the generator powers multiple, multiple things on the property, including the domestic area. And so it's, it's difficult to say exactly how much is used for the, the well pump itself.
So even if you start to convert over to, to solar, you still would need the generator for other purposes?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. Yeah, exactly.
So back to the well, you were gonna answer that question?
Which one, which question?
The well production.
Oh, yeah, I'm not sure. I don't have the well log in front of me here.
Sheriff, I may have got that in information.
Okay, go ahead, Director.
Mr. Mack, if you want to respond to the well log and well production reports.
Sure. Good evening, Commissioner. David Mack with Harrison Associates. There was a well completion report. So mid-August twenty-second of two thousand sixteen, I can share my screen if you'd like to see it, but I'm looking at it. The well produces about two gallons per minute and based on the calculation, if that well needed to pump the full amount of storage, it would need to run for a hundred days at twelve hours per day. The assumption is that the well would be pumping up or pumping into storage prior to the growing season so that it would not need to run for a hundred consecutive days at twelve hours a day. And this, as I said, storage would be pumped prior to the growing season and then the well could trigger on as irrigation needs through the growing season were needed. The, just because the question was asked about the water level, the water level of the well is two hundred and twenty-five feet, so the well is fairly deep. That was tested in two thousand sixteen and the well completion log is dated two thousand sixteen as well. And then there was a question about condition nineteen. There is an error in that condition. The deadline should read December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five and as of January one, twenty twenty-six, a new source of power needs to be implemented. And I think that was the bulk of the questions, but I'd be happy to answer any other ones with the help of Sarah as well.
Any questions for the representative or the staff, I should say?
My, Chair Bongio, my hand raise isn't working. Can I ask a quick question?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. I just didn't see anything else.
My hand, the digital thing isn't working. Did I mishear? Did I hear two gallons a minute on the well or did I mishear that?
I believe the well completion log, it yields two gallons per minute. You heard that correctly.
Okay. When was this well installed? The well completion report would have said the date, like month of the year.
Sure, it was, the water level and yield of completed well is dated August nineteenth, two thousand sixteen.
Okay, thank you for that.
Any other questions while we have the representative on?
Alan, this is Brian. They, they brought up the fact that they would like to pump water ahead of the cultivation season, but, and looking at the site plan, I'm not seeing where the water storage is and how much water they're able to store onsite. Can you have the staff cover that, please?
Yes. We would like to take that question.
Sure. Sarah, do you have the site plan available that you could share?
Uh, yes, I do. Pull it up.
There we go.
Yes. So the water tanks are blue circles throughout the property. What's gonna be used to store the water.
Then, sorry, this, this is David. The existing well is in the lower right-hand corner because Sarah, Sarah is sharing her screen. You can't, right there. Perfect. Thank you.
I see Steve put his hand back up. Maybe he has a comment on this.
Yeah, I'm not sure if I can just jump in or.
Go ahead.
The, those water tanks are not, they're not meant for long-term storage, for forbearance storage, for pumping ahead of the season. While they do provide that, they do provide that in a certain extent. There's only about ten thousand gallons out there. It's really meant for, you know, the well pumps into the tanks for use on the farm on a day-to-day basis. While most of the, you, so you can think of it as a direct diversion sort of a scenario. Of course, you know, if we're worried about the amount of power consumption for the water use, you know, over time, then adding more tanks would add to that. It would also add to seasonal drawdown of the well, but if it's hydrologically disconnected, that wouldn't have an effect regardless. So it's, we should just think of it as a direct diversion scenario.
Thank you, Steve. The director has asked the comment on this.
Can finish the conversation on the storage. It's, I wanted to go back to Ms. Patterson's questions. If now it's an appropriate time.
I think go ahead.
Yeah, the, the regulation of the, the noise is regulated by the cannabis ordinance. We, I didn't see a condition in there. We do normally apply a condition to ensure that there is noise compatibility. If it's the pleasure of the commission, we can apply the standard condition. She asked about whether or not permit holders could truck water and the answer to that is no. That water trucking is not allowed unless it's an emergency situation. And then she asked about the measuring of the water, who would measure the water? And as Mr. Brittenstein mentioned, there is condition, I believe it's number ten, that requires a water meter be installed and that, that will be checked and verified at each annual inspection.
Thank you, Director. Steve, I see you have your hand up. I, I'm assuming that's still, okay. Got taken that. All right, thank you. I wasn't sure if you were wanting to comment again. So.
So I have, I have one.
Okay, go ahead, Peggy.
So I would like, rather than have this drop dead deadline of converting a hundred percent over to a renewable source, I would like to see in the report that the well, solar pump be installed sooner than later. I mean, it doesn't have to be immediately, but not, you know, five years from now because it's, it's not just about the, the consumption, but it's also emissions that you have from these generators that run a hundred days for twelve hours a day. So if we could phase in, you know, over time, this conversion rather than, you know, have it happen in five years or whatever.
Any other comments?
It sounded like somebody offered that they were willing to install a solar panel to operate.
That's the honor system and I think it should be in the report, is my.
No, I, I, I'm agreeing with you and I'm just wanting to making sure that, that what we heard was a bona fide offer from someone that's authorized to speak on behalf of the applicant. Because if so, I'd like to make it a condition of approval.
Bona fide offer, let's do it.
Okay, and we'd also like to include the enclosure for the generator.
That's fine as well. I, I think the end of twenty twenty-two would be a, a fine date to, if you're in agreement for the solar. And we could get the generator shed even sooner than that.
That worked for Peggy and Brian? Okay, and I see David, you have your hand back up, so go ahead.
Yeah, just on the, the custom condition for the solar array for the pump, I was gonna suggest eighteen months, but I guess that's also the end of twenty twenty-two, maybe a little bit longer. Eighteen months, I mean, we could move it to twenty-one months if that's the desire of the commission. That would be the end of twenty twenty-two.
That sounds like that's what was requested, so let's go with that. Thomas, I see you have your hand up.
So this, this question is for staff and it's just more of a philosophical, but it is pertinent to this project because I do see it's claiming that there's a domestic residence. If that domestic residence, that all the generator use for the cannabis has to be dealt with by twenty twenty-six, but the domestic residence ju, on this property, just like any other property, could have a generator running twenty-four seven. Is that incorrect or is that, that's the way I understand Hoboken County?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
So this is a question for the director. When you have a property like this where there's, where there's surface water available and of course, you know, the applicant is not permitted to utilize surface water unless it's part of, you know, their project. But how do, how do we ver, trust but verify that all of the water's coming from the well and not from surface water or from delivered water? Or is, is, are somehow we looking at the total on, on the well meter to make sure that that's consistent with how much we expected that to be used?
So Commissioner Mitchell, yes, that is the purpose of putting the meter in so that we can see the amount coming out of the well and, and going to the cannabis cultivation site. You know, people, if they're really determined to, can obviously find ways to circumvent that. And if we find out that they have found ways to circumvent that, that's a violation and that's a violation of the permit, in which case they could well lose their permit.
Thank you, Director. That answer your question, Brian?
It did, thank you.
Right, any other questions for the applicant or his representatives or staff? All right, seeing none, bring it back to the commission for deliberation. Do we think?
Well, I guess I just wanted to say that I appreciate the applicant and their willingness to make modifications to address the noise and power and water issues that the commission had. So I would like to move that we find that the commission has considered the addendum to the adopted mitigated negative declaration for the commercial medical land use ordinance as described by section one five one six four of the state sequel guidelines. Make the required findings for approval of the conditional use permit and approve the ancient truth farms LLC conditional use permit as recommended by staff, subject to the revised recommended conditions of approval. And those revisions include enclosing the generator and putting a solar panel for use of the well by the end of twenty twenty-two as well as the correction to the date on which the rest of the power will change to correct the error in that condition.
I'll second that.
Okay, yeah, we'll have a motion in a second and any questions? I see Mike already has hand up, so go ahead, Mike.
Were we going to add the condition about the decibel level as the director had said that we needed to?
I don't think we needed to add a condition. That's already.
I think that's what the standard condition for the generator shed, their generator enclosure will do.
Okay.
Melanie. Any other questions?
One other question? So is that generator for both the residents and the grow?
Currently it is, but we'll separate them.
Okay. Is there a condition? So to the director, is there a condition about decibel levels for residents' generators or not?
There is not. It's a little bit of a difficult circumstance where you've got a generator that essentially powers the residents, but may also be used for the cannabis.
So did I hear correctly that the applicant's agent said that they would have a separate generator?
I think what you heard them say is that they're going to disconnect the cannabis use from the generator. And the generator will be placed in an enclosure.
And that is the, what the applicant is saying?
Yeah, we will build a, we will build a containment for the generator. In the meantime, we'll control the decibel levels until such time that the cannabis is reliant on a renewable energy source, at which time the generator will. at which time the generator will remain in that noise contained shed. We have no reason to remove it from the shed um for continued domestic use. Should, should the solar, unless it's easy to power the domestic with the solar use, that would, if it's economical, we'll do that as well.
All right, thank you.
Anybody else have a question or thoughts on this before we? I see no more hands. I will ask for the question. Roll call for please.
Alan Bonjio.
Yes.
Thomas Mulder.
Yes.
Noah Levy.
Yes.
Mike Newman.
Yes.
Peggy O'Neil.
Yes.
Brian Mitchell.
Yes.
Melanie McCavver.
Yes.
Motion carries unanimous. Thank you, everyone. All right, uh, that takes us to item number G, which is continued public hearings. And this is the Arcata Land Company, which has been asked to be continued to a date uncertain, but.
They, they actually would like it continued to a date certain.
Okay, a date certain, sorry about that. And you were, you didn't want to do it at the next meeting is what you're.
Well, that, that would be their, their request. Um, I do want to bring up to the commission that we do have 18 items already scheduled for that meeting. And uh, you know, our objective is to as, as I mentioned earlier, the reason we're using consultant help is to, to generate and get as many of these done as we can. And, and so that's beginning to take place. And, and so if we put this on that agenda, we could probably put all 18 on the consent calendar. I'm not sure that they would all stay on there. And I'm, I, I think that Arcata Land Company is worthy of a separate meeting. We will not see another planning commission hearing until May 6th because they're, of the way the Thursdays roll out. So we have April 15th, then April 22nd and then April 29th, uh, or Thursday evenings between April 15th and May 6th. I just want to throw um options out there. The simplest thing to do is continue it to April 15th, but if it would be agreeable to the commission to have a special meeting, that, that may be more appropriate.
Would that be the 22nd?
Could be the 20, the 22nd would be a good date, yes.
I'm in favor of that, if that's, if everyone else is.
Thomas, I see you have your hand up, so I think you have a comment on this.
So I just am looking at how light our agenda is tonight and thinking of all the applicants that could have been before the agenda tonight. So personally, I feel it only appropriate to bump, if we're going to continue this, to bump this project back to that May 6th. Um, unless everyone wants to meet at a special meeting, just to give the same treatment of pro- potential applicants that would have been on the agenda tonight, had we known we were going to continue that. Just my thoughts.
Thank you. Noah, I see you have your hand up.
Yeah, um, I, I just want to say I'm, I, I hear what Thomas just said, but um notwithstanding that, I definitely would favor scheduling a special meeting for this project. I think honestly, it's one of the rare projects that probably deserved that in the first place to, to have a meeting scheduled just for it. But, you know, given the, the heavy agenda, I, I also could do it on April 22nd. I, if that doesn't work for people, the 29th could work for me as well. That's all I really got.
Noah, Brian, I see you have your hand up.
I just wanted to say, uh, I don't believe that I am available for the April 15th and I would appreciate it going on the 22nd or 29th. Either one would work for me. And the, the 22nd is birthday, so we can look forward to every single speaker pointing that out to us if we do that.
All good.
I'm not opposed to the special meeting, but I guess what I would say is I'm new to this commission and I'm not used to special meetings. That if the commission starts pulling, you know, as the end of the year comes up, if the need for special meetings to get other applications at the same uh treatment would be provided to other applicants or, or maybe potentially um any continued items from the 15th get carried over to the, that special meeting as well if time is available, just throwing out some ideas if we're going to meet and if there's that many projects out there.
All right, thank you, Thomas. Uh, Noah, I see you have your hand up again.
Uh, yeah, I mean, I just, I just want to be clear. I don't think we're giving special treatment to the applicant. I think we're giving special treatment to the community. And I, I think the grounds for saying, this, this is just my view, it's not written and codified, but my view of the reason why this should have and should have had a, a special meeting in the first place is due to the volume of over a hundred public comments and the fact that they, you know, broke our Zoom. So just to be clear, it's, it's really that. It's not like just every time something's continued, we'll, we'll have a special meeting. That's my bit.
You just need to get it back in, Noah. You know what's going on. Just kidding, just kidding. Uh, Mike, you're on, you're on.
Yes, thank you, Chair. I, I, I would be okay with having it either the 22nd or the 29th. My battery's going low on my calendar, on my work um screen here. So yeah, the 22nd or the 29th. And if we needed to, I'm agreeable to um put the other ones that are continued from the meeting of the 15th uh that we cannot get to in case there is an overload on that as well. But we would put the priority uh for the um, the Arcata Land Company as the first priority on that um special meeting.
Uh, Director, this is a question for you. It's just a matter of needing to agendize those meet, those items correctly for the next meeting, that if, if you don't get to them, they'll go on to the next.
We would, we would agendize those for 4/15. And then if they're continued, we would continue them to say the meeting of 4/22. Yeah.
Okay. Sounds good. Thomas, you have your hand back up or?
I just, yes, would that meet the 10-day noticing requirements if we, I realized if something was continued from the 15th meeting to the 22nd, that might be unreasonable because it might not meet the 10-day noticing requirements.
They would have been legally noticed for the 4/15 meeting and so.
Okay, okay. Just, it was a random thought that went through my mind. Thank you.
That's kind of where I was going too, because I just wanted to make sure we had it agendized right so that we could do them on the 22nd if we needed to. All right, thank you. So it sounds like there's kind of a consensus there, um, but I will ask for a vote on this.
Need a motion?
A motion to move the proposed project by the Arcata Land Company to April 22nd at 6:00 PM.
Thank you, Melanie. Is there a second for that motion?
Oh, second.
Mike Newman second that. We discussion. Okay, so I will ask for a roll call vote, please.
Alan Bonjio.
Yes.
Thomas Mulder.
Yes.
Noah Levy.
Yes.
Mike Newman.
Yes.
Peggy O'Neil.
Yes.
Brian Mitchell.
Yes.
And Melanie McCavver.
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, everyone. Um, it's about seven o'clock, so we're going to take a quick break before we get to our last item. We'll be quite a bit of a special on this one. It's probably our own call. It's going to take five minutes. Be back in a second. And uh, we will move on to the next item, which is Renewable Properties LLC Hattery Road Solar Project in the Blue Lake area. And I will take a staff report.
Please, uh, share the screen.
Yes, please.
All right, let me see here. All right, can you see it all right?
Uh, I'm not seeing anything so far.
Joshua, I think you might have to turn your video back on.
Uh, video. There we go. Thank you.
Now we can see.
All right, can you see the screen?
Yes.
All right, so this here is the um, it's a Hattery Road Solar Project. It's a conditional use permit. And um, we give the presentation tonight. Um, the project summary, the.
Joshua, Joshua, we're, we're not seeing your screen.
You're not seeing it?
No. Seeing you.
You look great.
That was good.
Hmm, share screen.
I think you got it.
There we go.
There we go.
All right, there we go. Okay, good evening commissioners in public. I'm Joshua. I'm going to give the presentation tonight. This is the Hattery Road Solar Project. It's a um, the conditional use permit application. And um, essentially the summary of it, it's a proposed solar array, which would occupy approximately 26 acres of an approximately 38 acre site. Includes about 14,000 modules or solar panels, some 32 string inverters, some other associated equipment. Overall height is less than eight feet and it would occupy approximately 1,400 square feet of impervious surface area. It generate approximately four megawatts of energy, which is enough to power 1,200 homes for a year. And um, a little background on the property zone unclassified and has a general land use designation of AE. And here's the location of it. You can see the, in the black here, this is uh city of Blue Lake to the north, Hattery Road, running northerly southerly. Hattery's just below southerly here. And here's a shot of the um, the actual parcel as it appears off the web, GIS here, currently agricultural. And here's the proposed, the proposed site plan, the arrays, as you see on here. And before I got into it, I wanted to bring up some um changes since the staff report was published. One, as John mentioned earlier, is a, a revised resolution and some slightly revised conditions of approval. And the above, those two changes are included in the supplemental number one, which was transmitted several hours ago to you. So, and I'm going to briefly go over the revised resolution, just um, just kind of outline some items. And what you see underlined in red is basically what was added and items that are in red and struck through, our items deleted. So we added some language. We corrected the applicant's company name. Um, some minor, minor changes here. We added um, another item on finding to basically adding the um, approving, the mitigation and monitoring and reporting program. And also some other, you can see just some minor minor word, changes of words and so forth on there. And here's the, the final one, and we added a little wording on the decision. And again, just clarified some, some wording on, on the resolution and a brief condition of approval. We added that um, all components shall be approved and operated consistent with, we added the monitoring, mitigation, monitoring and reporting program. And we removed condition number seven, which related to onsite parking. We had a discussion with the applicant and with Public Works and that condition was not relevant or needed, so we proposed to remove it. And that's the changes on the condition of approval. And to go into um, basically from the general plan, there's an agricultural and land use policy and it discusses the conversion of prime ag land. And it identifies, the general plan identifies utilities and energy facility as, as an allowable use on AE land. And there's also another um, general plan policy, has a no net loss of agricultural lands or uses. And I wanted to bring up, this is the first time this concept has been applied to the county where a, a use other than agriculture is proposed on agricultural land. So it's um somewhat of a charting new waters and I'm not going to go into detail, but the, the, the no net loss agricultural policy from the general plan is before you and essentially says that, you know, the planning commission must make findings as there's no feasible alternative. The facts support the public, you overriding public consideration. And then lands outside of urban development boundaries, there's some mitigation required. And again, I'm not going to read just verbatim, but you know, you can see that basically replant, vegetate, replant ag, retire, non-agricultural uses on land's plan for agriculture, financial contribution to an agricultural land fund, and the amount sufficient to offset, offset the use, the conversion. And um, this project, this project incorporates other agri- agricultural uses to achieve a no net loss. And then I wanted to state too, that there's a growing understanding that agricultural and uh solar systems can effectively coexist on properties. The term's called agro-voltatic. And it's been applied to this practice and it's a kind of a growing, a growing use. And um, and how we're going to ensure there's no net losses, part of the project includes an agricultural management plan, which that's essentially they're going to maintain agricultural activities onsite. There's going to be, you know, no, no net loss of ag use. They're going to um, maintain agricultural uses such as sheep grazing, keeping honeybees, kind of an apiary situation, planting, planting of row crops, pollinator meadows, and this, all these would be um, part of the ag management plan would be subject to review and approval of the planning department. And also part of that to ensure that there's no net loss, there's going to be a, there's a reclamation and decommissioning plan proposed. And this basically says, at the end of the 35-year forecasted project life, that the project will be completely decommissioned and all the, all infrastructure removed. If the, if the project is not renewed at 35 years, but at the end of that 35 years, there's a plan to reclaim it and part of that is going to also be a financial bond to ensure that the money, there's finances there to, to reclaim it if necessary. And um, touched on a couple other considerations. There's another general plan policy that talks about local renewable energy supply and the stance, the policy stance of the county is essentially to support this type of facility unless there's other environmental or regulatory factors which cannot be overcome. And also the project um was subject, is subject to environmental review under the SEQA. And we circulated, prepared and circulated a mitigated negative deck. And I wanted to note that initially this was circulated for 30 days, but due to concerns being raised and different um issues being that were communicated early on, uh, the county staff decided to circulate it to increase that review period to 45 days. So the, the mitigated egg deck was circulated for a 45-day public comment and review period. As you can see there from January 12th to February 26th of this year. And during the time, the M, the um MND was being circulated, the county conducted a community outreach meeting on February 2nd. And the intent of that was to receive comments, address concerns, kind of inform neighbors and the public, kind of what was, what was being proposed. And there's 64 applicants at that, 64 attendees at that Zoom meeting. And out of that meeting, there's three ma- three main concerns were raised. Impacts, visual impacts, noise impacts and record. Impacts, visual impacts, noise impacts and record impacts to recreation. And I'll briefly touch on those. And on the, on the visual, there's primarily a neighborhood to the north was raising concerns about the visual, the aesthetic impacts of the, of the solar. And then as a result of that, the applicant provided a visual simulation of the project as seen from different vantage points. Coming down north to south down on Hatchery Road along the project site. And the result, the summary is that the arrays wouldn't be visible, but due to the relatively low height in the downslope of the land, they would not, they would basically be minimized. They wouldn't be a real prominent feature of the landscape. And any visual impact is essentially not associated with a designated scenic resource. Because again, the general plan calls out for protection of, of designated scenic resources. And this is not designated. So on the visual, here's the, the visual renderings that the applicant provide. As you can see, here's coming on Hatchery Road from B to the north, all the way down to F1. And you can see in the southern portion of this, this is the proposed solar arrays. You can see them overlaid on here. And here's the location of B1, you know, Hatchery Road looking southeast to the left is the existing view. To the right is the proposed view with the solar, with the solar installation installed with the development. It's location B. There's a location C2 Hatchery Road looking southeasterly. Again, there's not, the, the left is what the current view and then the right is what would be the proposed, with the proposed development. And there's not, not much you can see. And then location E2 is kind of Hatchery Road looking southeast. And to the left again is the existing view. To the right is the proposed. And you can see the, the arrays here slightly above the, slightly above the view line. And then there's some poles and so forth associated with those power poles to, to tie into the PG and E grid. So that would be the, kind of the anticipated view from location E2. And then location F1 at the southwest corner of the site. It's, as you can see, it's fairly shrouded with brambles and, you know, pretty thick vegetation. So you're not able to even see onto the site from location F1. And then the final location is F2. And this gate is the access, it's in the southwest portion of the property and it's the access into the site. And as you can see, the left side is the existing view, the right side is the proposed. And you can see the solar arrays kind of low line here on the landscape.
And the next. Your question there at that juncture right there. What about fencing around this proposed site? I don't see any fencing right here. And I thought there was supposed to be fencing.
You're right. Thank you. I forgot to mention that there's also part of the project is approximately 6,200 feet of a six foot high fencing. And they propose barbed wire at the top, you know, to prevent trespass onto the project site. But yes, this does not include the proposed fencing.
So is, is the fencing right where that gate is right along there and all around?
It would be, yeah, essentially follow that gate line.
So that would be in there as proposed in several of the other camera angles as well?
Correct. Like, I'm not sure about the F1 perhaps. But I think definitely along like E2 there, you'd be able to.
Right, there on that, that's right photo there. All along there would be a fence, a chain link fence with barbed wire on it. Array back there.
That's the proposed proposal, yes.
How high would that be in that brush area right there just off the road? How far off the road would that fence be?
Um, we'll be out of the right of way, which I believe is 30 feet from the center line. So probably along, there's an existing barbed wire fence through this brush. So I imagine it would be essentially the same footprint as this.
Except it would be higher.
Right. And six feet is approximately as high as I would say this green shrub here.
Yeah.
You know, probably right in that neighborhood.
So you wouldn't see the array, but you'd see the chain link fence.
Yes, you would.
Okay, thank you.
Let's try and get through the presentation before we ask questions.
All right. And then the, the second issue that was raised at the community outreach meeting was noise. You know, people, neighbors were concerned that there could be noise potentially. Because I, I forgot to mention that the, the arrays are on a sun tracker. They essentially move, follow the sun through the day. So it's an electric motor, be a low hum, that motor powering. But that would be essentially a negligible noise. And then the, the main noise would be just part of the construction activities, like noise normally associated with, with project construction. It would last, you know, approximately three to four months during the summertime. And then the third concern raised was impacts on recreation. And I wanted to note that the project is located on private property fenced with no public access. And it's not part of any existing or proposed recreational facilities such as a park or a trail or anything along those lines. And because parking was actually recreation and then vehicles, recreational vehicles was a concern. And then the project would not generate any traffic associated outside of the, the construction, except for six times a year, a maintenance, maintenance staff would come and check on the, check on the project and clean it and do it other, other maintenance. So there'd be, you know, basically a total of six trips per year generated from this project. And I wanted to go into like public comments, we received 93 comments, which are included in your staff report as attachment two. And then five additional comments were received since the staff report was published last week. And those were included a supplemental number two that are before you tonight. And then actually there's two more comments that I received just within the past couple hours. So they weren't able to get into this. There was actually seven additional comments received, but didn't have the opportunity to forward those along. And essentially that's the, the recommended commission action is before you is basically adopt the neg deck. Adopt the findings and I'm approve the conditional use permit based on findings and evidence subject to the conditions of approval.
Any questions for staff? And then I'd like to ask the applicant to address commission if they have any points they want to bring up.
Hey Josh, you can stop your share.
So I'm not seeing any commissioners asking questions. And I, Aaron, would you like to address the commission please?
Yes, if I may, can you guys hear me? Okay, I have a presentation I'd like to go through. Great. Give me one second. Let me get this going here. Okay. First, I'd like to thank the staff and commissioners for taking the time to review our application and the associated materials. My name is Erin Halimi and I am the founder and president of Renewable Properties, a Northern California based company specializing in developing solar projects throughout the United States in Northern California. Our work helps to decrease this nation's dependence on fossil fuels. In terms of my presentation, we'll walk through a solar overview, go through the Hatchery Road solar project details and a short conclusion. Our principles have a proven track record of performance. We have a combined 40 plus years of solar development experience across 1,000 megawatts of solar facilities. Renewable Properties has many projects under development with local communities throughout Northern California. And we're excited to bring solar energy generation to Humboldt County, particularly in conjunction with Redwood Coast Energy Authority. A little bit on community choice aggregators or CCAs. They are governmental entities formed by cities and counties to procure electricity for their residents, businesses and municipal facilities. New CCAs have formed in California in recent years. They rely on groups like Renewable Properties to provide them renewables. And it's critical now more than ever. Our CEA is a leader amongst CCAs in California, but as a public agency, they're not in a position to monetize the tax credits associated with renewables. So they rely on executing power purchase agreements with companies like Renewable Properties to provide them renewables. This slide shows all of the various threshold items that have to be met in order for a site to be viable. We start at a very high level with market strategy and entry analysis. In the case here, there was a willing buyer in our CEA prioritizing local renewables. It then comes down to site specific characteristics. We avoid flood zones. The topography has to be correct. We have to have site access through a legal right of way. We avoid any known critical habitat. We have to have proximity to the grid, so the pre-existing electrical infrastructure. And we avoid all wetlands. And we also have to do a grid analysis to determine if we can cost effectively connect to the grid. As it relates to this project, the local utility company provided a map of soils to avoid for this type of project, which was an additional screening layer that was used for this specific project. We also have to have a path to permitting or entitlement. In the case of this project, utilities and energy facilities are allowed with approval of a use permit. And last, but certainly not least, we have to have willing landowners. The economics must work. In short, there's a significant amount of time, energy and resources invested. Moving to some of the technical aspects of solar PV. With regards to glare, the solar panels are designed to absorb the sun, not reflect it. We also utilize a single access tracking technology, which moves the panels throughout the day to maximize the efficiency or the absorption. And we've also completed a glare study that confirms there's no glare hazard or impact. With regards to noise, there's no noise of significance associated with this use. And with regards to traffic, there's no traffic impacts associated with this type of development. Once the project is built, it requires very little ongoing maintenance. Diving into the project itself, the project is located on Hatchery Road in Humboldt County. We have a land lease with the property owner for two parcels, just shy of 38 acres. With a proposed project footprint of 25 acres for a four megawatt AC, four, 5.6 megawatt DC solar array. The site is zoned U or unclassified with the general plan designation of AE agricultural exclusive. The project will power 1,200 homes per year in Humboldt County when built. And the project output will be used by our CEA through a long-term power purchase agreement. And we will interconnect to PG's pre-existing electrical distribution system, which is located onsite with minimal upgrades required. This is the location from a zoomed out perspective. You'll see we're about a mile south of the city of Blue Lake's sphere of influence. And roughly a little over 700 feet from the southernmost end of the residential community to the north. As Joshua mentioned, this is the site plant. What I will note is a couple of things. First, the horseshoe shape is due to the avoidance of the wetland in the middle of the site and respecting the 150 foot setbacks. The array to the north is about 75 feet from the lot line. And then the array's closest point to the south is a few hundred feet from the lot line. A point of clarification and correction, the visual simulations that you saw earlier and I will show actually include the chain link fence. As identified on this site plan, the chain link fence hugs the actual solar array. It is not near Hatchery. So again, at the north, about 75 feet from the road and at the south, a few hundred feet from the road. The sheer distance of these, the installation is what is causing the visual effect there. A little bit on, on how we got here. As you can see by this slide, there were numerous studies conducted for this project. A phase one environmental site assessment, topographical and boundary surveys, a biological constraints assessment, a cultural resources assessment, a stormwater drainage report, an industry safety report, a project specific glare study, interconnection studies and an FAA determination of no hazard. As you can see, we also compiled additional information and commissioned other studies at the request of staff and the community over the past couple of years. Additionally, the project has gone through the AD 52 tribal consultation process. And the Blue Lake Rancheria led the engagement and approved the project before you tonight. With regards to the general plan and zoning consistency, the general plan land use designation is agricultural exclusive or AE. And the general plan identifies solar facilities as a compatible use on AE lands. In fact, the general plan goals and policies call upon the county to approve renewable energy projects. In addition to the general plan allowing solar facilities on ag exclusive lands, the project is consistent with the policy AGP6 as there will be no net loss of agricultural lands. In fact, there will be a net benefit to agricultural lands through continued agricultural use. A decommissioning plan ensuring the property will be returned to its original condition with financial protections to the county. And the installation of a pollinator plant meadow, which will enhance the local biodiversity within three miles of the project and improve the soil quality onsite. The site is zoned, oop, I went a little too fast. The site is zoned unclassified. And similar to the general plan, utility and energy facilities are allowed in this zone with approval of a conditional use permit, which is the purpose of our meeting tonight. As you can see, California is a leader when it comes to renewable energy. Everyone needs to do their part in California, especially in light of SB 100, which requires 50% of California's electricity to be powered by renewables with 100% zero carbon electricity by 2045. Moving on to the view shed, the solar array would be roughly 12 to 18 inches above ground level and six to eight feet tall at its tallest point. The solar array would be briefly visible to motorists traveling along Hatchery Road, but would not obstruct any key scenic vistas or views as identified on the general plan. When visible, the project would appear as a dark colored horizontal trending feature along the ground. And due to its short height, the project would not obstruct views along Hatchery Road. The pictures here are the existing conditions on a long stretch of Hatchery Road. And what you will see is a lot of natural vegetation as well as some berm and topography that really shields the majority of the site. I'll skip through the visual assessment quickly as Joshua previously presented on it. I will just mention that we get to these photos where you can see the array a little bit more. That there is actually the chain link fence. It's hard to see, but that's due to the contrast of the dark panels behind it. And that's true to what they look like in real, real life. Here's another photo of that. I might be able to zoom in actually. Yeah, here, if I zoom in here, you can start to see the chain link fence commissioner Newman, I know you had a question about that. But just to show where my, my mouse is, if you zoom in there, you'll see the actual fence is included in the visual rendering. So moving on to the community outreach and engagement, over the course of the project's lifecycle, Renewable Properties has engaged with various members and community stakeholders. Humboldt State University, the North Coast Growers Association, the Blue Lake Rancheria and Wiat Tribes. Humboldt County Farm Bureau, the county planning and building department, the city of Blue Lake, Humboldt County Beekeepers Association, the Cattlemen's Association, Green Diamond Resource Company and North Fork Lumber, UC Agricultural Extension, the College of the Redwoods, local sheep farmers and community members at large. This has resulted in a project with significant input from members of the Humboldt County community, ranging from Garberville all the way up to Trinidad. In conclusion, I'd like to briefly share a few things about the importance of renewable energy, the time it took to get here. We began this process and our community outreach efforts over two years ago. The Humboldt County Action Plan. We're in California. SB 100 enacted in 2018, 100%. We're in California, SB 100 enacted in 2018, 100% goal by 2045. Solar is a low-impact development, and the diverse community support from the project from all over the county with over 45 letters of support. The project is late-stage and ready to start construction by the second quarter of this year. It is a near-term impact on climate change, and climate change is a global problem that requires local solutions. This project is an opportunity for Humboldt County to be part of the solution. Thank you, and I'm happy to address any questions or comments at this time.
Thank you, Aaron. Any questions for Aaron, why we have him from the commission? I got a few. Mike, you're up first.
One question that comes to mind is, with existing mill sites and other industrial sites, were those considered first before this site?
Yes, so we went through a very extensive site acquisition effort, starting over two years ago. We start with the GIS model. I threw up the solar site selection process slide. So we go through all that, and we reach out to landowners, and we were actually engaged with Green Diamond Resource and North Fork Lumber, and I believe they even submitted a letter indicating that they weren't interested because that Corbell site has been brought up quite a bit through the community engagement over the last couple of months. But we have evaluated a lot of opportunities throughout the county. And as I mentioned in my presentation, the most important piece after we have all our threshold criteria is willing landowners. And what that really means is the economics ultimately have to work. And those sites have a higher and better use, and so typically the economics don't work.
Mike, Noah?
Thank you. Well, first, I just wanted to make an ex parte disclosure. I did meet with Mr. Halimi at the site last week, and I also have discussed this project a couple of times with Supervisor Mike Wilson. I will, you know, I'll save some of my thoughts about this for later, but my keen interest in this project, which I do support, is to see the ways in which it can actually maybe demonstrate the proof of concept that it could coexist with certain types of agricultural activities. That was mentioned in the staff report by Mr. Doris, but I just wanted to see if, I guess I do have one question. Would there be flexibility in the terms of the project regarding the height of the panels such that we could allow for them to be higher for a portion of them when they're in areas that are further away from the field, if that was desirable for the purposes of co-location with certain grazing or other types of activities? I guess that is a question for Mr. Halimi.
Sure, thank you, Commissioner Levy. As it relates to the continued agricultural use, as Joshua mentioned, through the agricultural management plan, we'll either be utilizing sheep grazing on a rotational basis, the keeping of honeybees, or the installation of rotational crops. We've been in communication with Humboldt State University, with College of the Redwoods, and the UC Agricultural Extension program in some research and some collaboration. I was hoping that we'd have some sort of formal arrangement with any one of those higher education institutions in advance of this hearing, but we do not. But what I can tell you is that there's an active dialogue. We could evaluate if different heights of the track or wood in fact impact the ag production. We'd be open to evaluating it, but our primary focus right now is, you know, making sure that we have some collaboration with the university so they can do some research on the project.
Absolutely. Well, thank you for that answer, and we can talk a little bit more about that later on. I mainly want to make sure that, not requiring anything so specific as elevated heights of the stems or anything like that, but simply to make sure that in our effort to protect against visual impacts that we don't actually write the project terms in a way that prohibits you raising them up, say, above the standard four or five feet. I think that's just something we want to be considering as a possible way that the co-location with, you know, grazing uses could take place potentially in the future. But thanks again. I'll pass to somebody else.
Thomas, you're next.
So I think my questions are kind of for staff. I put up my hand, but you might have missed it, and I just let the applicant. Can I ask those questions now?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, so this kind of, my concern with projects technically commercial almost that are built and then not going to be visited per se brings up my concern in the county with cell phone towers. I don't see anywhere that people that are coming to inspect six times a year, maybe more, are going to use restroom facilities, especially during COVID. I don't know if everyone's aware how hard it is to find a restroom. I just want to make sure that parking standards for ADA compliance, that's kind of a concern of other commercial activities that I see placed upon businesses within the county. So I want to make sure we're treating everyone with parity, and if we're able to circumvent those ADA bathroom and parking requirements, that maybe we can circumvent those requirements for other projects within the county. I don't see anything as far as fire safe, like a turnaround access in the plot plan. That's kind of concerning, and I do see that required on other commercial activities. The other thing that I see is the potential, you know, you don't want weeds to grow up into everything. I don't see any restrictions on use of pesticides and herbicides or any type of things that will keep crops from growing into the panels. Sometimes it's cheaper to spray stuff than it is to use weed whackers and stuff like that. So I think the project in concept is a great idea. Those are just some concerns I'm bringing up that I feel.
You want to address those now, or you want?
Sure, we can take a shot at that. So moving into the ADA parking compliance. ADA parking spaces come about because there is parking required. You notice tonight, one of the things that we did is remove Condition 7 because there is no parking required. There will be no permanent employees on-site. There will be a technician visiting this site. So there's no parking requirement there. In terms of ADA bathrooms, this will not be a permanent work location for somebody. There will not be somebody inside a building here operating and working throughout the day. So there is not a requirement for a bathroom. In terms of the fire-safe turnarounds, obviously, the concern here primarily is with what may happen with the grass and the weeds, which you also kind of ties into your next question in terms of maintaining that. From a coordinate standpoint, you'll notice that there is a setback completely around the facility, which is basically grassland. We did not get comments, to my knowledge, from the fire district asking for a road circumventing the entire site. The site will be maintained and maybe worthwhile. If it's a concern, I don't know that we've added a condition or if it's into applicant's operations plan to not use pesticides or herbicides. But if the site is being maintained and used for agricultural purposes, obviously, they don't want to just annude the site and kill everything there. This still will be an agricultural facility, and that is part of the critical component that the commission is being asked to make a decision on tonight, is that first, can this agricultural site continue to have different agricultural uses and support a solar array at the same time, and that not be considered a net loss of agricultural land?
Got your questions, Thomas?
Sorry, it took a minute to unmute. For the most part, I still have my, I mean, it's just an underlying issue, but it's, I understand that I would be comfortable with some sort of pesticide herbicide restriction. And I apologize for not emailing out these comments or questions beforehand. There was lots of other emails and comments we were reading on other projects, so my apologies.
Brian, looks like you're next.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to bring up the fact that the Redwood Coast Energy Authority included some correspondence saying that they had only planned on purchasing two megawatts of power, but all the documents from the applicant state that there will be four produced. And I was just curious what was the cause of that discrepancy or if there's a plan for the other power that will be produced. And in addition, I needed to make an ex parte disclosure that I had a conference call with the project proponents about two weeks ago.
May I add that question? Oh, thank you, Commissioner, Chair. So the project is for a 4-megawatt AC project. What I can tell you is that the current program size by RCEA is for 6 megawatts total, and so this project is 4 megawatts of that. So they have 2 megawatts of available capacity elsewhere that we're not a part of. And so perhaps the numbers got flip-flopped in the communication. But that, this is a 4-megawatt project, and the utility is committed to buying 6 megawatts total of local renewables. And so hopefully that answers your question.
Thank you.
Next caller, Melanie.
Yes, thank you. Thank you for the presentation. I did visit the site as well about two weeks ago, and I think it's a great project. I just wanted to say that as an appiculturist, I'd be very surprised if the beekeepers who intend to use the property would be on board if there were pesticides and herbicides used. I believe the applicant told me that there would not be, but we could ask the applicant for verification of that. My related question was, we had discussed seed for certain types of pollinators and the wetland strip that's going to be down the middle. And I'm wondering if there were plans to plant the wetland strip with pollinator-friendly plants as well. And that's it.
Thank you, Commissioner McCaver. That was a good question. As it relates to pesticides and herbicides, we have no intention on using pesticides at the site. With regards to herbicides, we do need to use some herbicides as part of the pollinator plant meadow installation in making sure that those native grasses and forbs actually take and the invasive species do not overcome them. With regards to the installation of the pollinator plant meadow, it is currently contemplated to be within the area, within the fence, so the 25-acre footprint. What I failed to mention in all of the discussion is the current use of the field there is cattle grazing, and the landowner will continue to graze their cattle on the areas of the land that are not within the fence. And so that wetland strip in particular will still have cattle grazing in there. So I'm not too sure about our ability to plant the meadow there, but we do, the plan is to do the entire inside of the fence of the array.
Okay. All right, so the herbicide, I presume that would just be used until the native plants were established?
That is correct. That is correct.
And will that, yeah, thank you.
And as you know, it can be a year to, a year to 18-month-long process to kind of, to get the pollinator plant meadow to take.
That's right, and will you use a backpack spring for that then?
You know, I am not in a position, oh, I'm getting messaged, yes. The answer to that is yes.
That's what I see.
I'm not the person that's managing the relationship with the pollinator partnership that we partnered with on the pollinator plant meadow, but my colleague is listening in, confirmed, yes.
Okay, wonderful, yes, that's far better than broadcast spring, obviously, so. All right, thank you. I think it's a really great project, and I look forward to hearing public comment.
All right. Any other questions from commissioners before I open the public comment? See you done, so. Thank you for your participation, Aaron, and possibly we'll have you back at the end to address some of the public's concerns. So hang around. And I will now open up the public comments section and switch over to attendees. It looks like we have six, and the first one is public 0749. Go ahead, star six done mute. Are you there, 0749? Okay, we'll move on to the second caller, which is Katie Sombach.
Thank you, I appreciate it. I have a, there was a study done in 2018 about brownfield sites in Humboldt County, and there's 37 that would be perfect for solar and 14 are like ready to go. Everything would be great for a solar field, and that's in a study done that I sent in to you guys in my comments previously. And so it sounds like they chatted with maybe a couple of those, but being that there's 37, it doesn't seem like those brownfield sites were, or alternative sites were actually exhausted, since there are so many more mill sites around Humboldt County that are not being used. So I would argue that alternative sites have not been fully pursued. Another concern I have is that the Gwinup Land where the asphalt plant is, when that went in, it was for a certain amount of area, and over the years, that space that they've taken up of their own ag land has grown more and more and more. So the concern is with the land they've already used up for ag land, now they're using up, you know, altering other parts of their land for more commercial or industrial use. So I would really encourage you to look into how much land had been taken up of ag that they originally had versus how much they're going to have after this project, and if that makes sense for preserving ag land in Humboldt County. Another concern I have is that sheep could draw in predators. We have mountain lions, and I don't know as far as how tall the fence is, if that would keep out a mountain lion, but we have had mountain lions killing deer in our neighborhood recently. So that's a concern that that could draw in predators. So that's a concern with sheep. Another concern is the telephone poles. Six telephone poles in that location totally changes the viewscape. So there is still an aesthetic concern for those of us living in the neighborhood. And that we would really like to see if this project does go through some alterations, if possible, to, for us in the community who live right there, to not have it completely change our neighborhood to looking like an industrial polar, you know, solar or energy plant. We move there for the countryside and for the rural setting, and our, the housing prices in our area are quite high compared to other places in Humboldt County.
You're gonna have to wrap it up.
Sorry, so telephone poles, if possible, to have those lines under the ground instead of up on a telephone pole. And landscaping, if possible, to hide that chain-link fence, if that's possible. Really appreciate that, and also the lighting if.
Thank you. All right. Public 0749, what's your value? Are you there?
Hello?
Hello?
Hi, this is 0749?
Yes, yes.
Okay, I have many questions regarding solar energy, solar power. Is this some twine-type? Is this some type of energy? Fascinates me. I would like to know, do you have an email where I can submit my questions? An email address?
Yes, we do. Questions to J D O R R I S at C O dot Humboldt dot.
Could you repeat that one? Could you go that one more time, please?
I would suggest rather than taking your precious three minutes now that you call the department tomorrow and get a contact.
Okay, I just want you to know, I did submit an email to trying to 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 address the question I had earlier. It went to C O B at C O that Humboldt.
Well, that. That went to the clerk of the board, which is not the planning and building department.
I know. Okay, so I will do my best to try to get in touch with people, but I want to, thank you very much.
Thank you. Next caller is Kardashian.
I apologize, I mean. You did a great job, thank you. Yeah, I also live about a mile from this site and I walk down there probably two or three times a week. And it's actually a, what I would like the board to know is an area that's used quite a bit. There's usually about, I'd say twenty five to fifty cars parked there. It's right along the edge of the project. It's not on Hatchery Road is a trail that goes to the river. And it's very, very heavily used. So I I have a concern about the chain link fact fence. It looks like it's going to be right on the edge there. That would be, I think, the, I guess that would be the south edge of the project. And in the diagrams, it said F one and F two, right along there. It looked like there's going to be a fence. So part of my question is, could there be? And there's really not eight feet of vegetation to block that fence. Would the proponents be willing to create some landscaping to hide the fence at least along that area? That's the first. And then the other thing that apparently this is not a change in zoning, is that correct?
That's correct.
So I guess my question is, would they be willing to do some landscaping to hide that chain link? There are blackberry brambles there, but they're not eight feet tall. I mean, we'd be looking at a chain link fence with with barbed wire at the top for sure, if they don't do anything new.
Applicants talk about that at the end.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, sir. All right, next caller is Mahala Slacarelli.
Hi, thank you. This is Mahala Slacarelli, you did pretty good. So I'm the manager at Redwood Coast Energy Authority that manages the the feed in tariff program under which we're contracting with renewable properties for the energy from this project. And I just wanted to clarify on the question about the two megawatts versus four megawatts. So it's really just a, it was a timing issue. The letter that we sent in in support of this project was referring to two megawatts that were currently under contract at the time. And then the the developer had submitted to you folks for four megawatts because they were very optimistic, rightly so, rightly so. We did end up going into contract with them for the full four megawatts.
All right, next caller is Jason Cruz. All right, seeing no Jason, I'll move on to the next caller, which is Jim Zolli.
Yeah, hi there. Sorry, I wasn't certain if that was working, so I also dialed into my on on my phone. Can you hear me? Yes. Okay, great. So as was stated by the by the the folks that did the presentations, this project is in is in compliance with the Humboldt County General Plan. And so I'm a I'm a local energy research engineer. I've been working in the energy field, the renewable energy field for about thirty years now. And I was involved in the development of the energy plant, of the energy element for the Humboldt County General Plan. Excuse me, General Plan Update. And this project is consistent and is exactly the type of project that the energy element was intended to encourage here in Humboldt County. So, you know, I I'm, I'm, obviously, I'm, I'm, you know, speaking as a proponent. And I certainly understand, you know, that there are various concerns of from local residents and and others about some aspects of the project. It it sounds to me like the the project applicant has has, you know, taken those things into consideration and there's been, you know, efforts to mitigate any impacts. Certainly, any energy project is going to have impacts. And I know that, you know, energy projects that are that are someplace else have impacts on on others, but not impacts on us here in Humboldt County. And I would say that we really need to start, you know, for with renewable energy, developing renewable energy projects here. You know, and and really embrace the changes that 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 means. Certainly try to mitigate any impacts to the best of our ability. But we need to be willing to, you know, have some local impacts in order to provide local renewable energy. And the thing I'd like to point out, I think that, you know, many people are in favor of renewable energy as a way of reducing our carbon footprint. I think many people that that have concerns about, you know, perhaps environmental issues that are around renewable energy projects, you know, are 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 in favor of of mitigating climate change. For for us in Humboldt County to mitigate our carbon footprint, we cannot just purchase renewable energy from outside the area. We can do that, but that's not actually going to to reduce our carbon footprint because we don't have the transmission lines capable of importing the power that we need here. So we have to have local power plants that the majority of that now is is the local biomass plant and more so the PG&E power plant. And the PG&E power plant is natural gas. So unless we build local renewables here that can offset the need to run the local plant, we're not going to reduce our carbon footprint. So I think this is exactly the type of project we need to be encouraging and and supporting. And certainly, you know, things like the agrivoltic concept is a great idea and we should be, we should be pursuing that as well. So, you know, I'd just like to encourage the the commissioners to to approve this project. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. All right, next caller is.
Hi, can you hear me? Okay?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, I'm I'm actually a member of three fifty Humboldt. My name is Pat Carr. But I'm also one of those folks who has been a recreational user of the project area. I'm a birder. My wife and I have been out to the Fish Hatchery and the surrounding area along Hatchery Road many times. We've seen in that period of time, we've gone out there bald eagles, osprey nesting purple martens. And I think that most birders would agree that climate change poses a dire threat to bird populations globally as well as locally. But in contrast, this project, particularly with its support of pollinators and you know, pollinators are actually something that many birds rely on for food. So this really could aid local bird life directly in addition to its intended effect of providing renewable electricity, which has the potential of helping us reduce climate change. And I'm I'm thinking about the fact that if we are successful over time in stopping climate change, it's quite likely going to come at the price of a lot of projects with much more significant environmental impacts than this one has. This project, you know, in contrast, it entails really minimal impacts for the gains of providing renewable electricity for one thousand two hundred houses. And I hope that the commission approves this tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next caller is Merritt Perry.
Hi, thanks, can you guys hear me okay? Yes. Yeah, I'll keep it short. I did submit a long letter. I won't go through all those things. I will say, I'd ask the commission to really pay attention to what the focus of their job is. And that I'm going to abbreviate is to make sure that the environmental impacts were assessed properly and that the project is consistent with the general plan. It's not a broader, should we have solar energy or not? I'm I'm a huge proponent of solar energy. I think it's going to be the solution that we need. And I think the dozens of letters of support from the Humboldt three fifty folks are right and they should be passionate about solar. But the site specific issues here, I mean, this you've heard from, you heard from Commissioner Levy, others, this is a proof of concept. Okay, so general plan policy that says no net loss of ag lands. This is a thirty five year project that will be, you know, there's no reason to think this won't go in indefinitely. Once the entitlements are on this land, this will be a permanent taking. The Farm Bureau opposes it, right? So the reason that this project is, you know, that according to environmental document, they're going to prepare an agricultural management plan and they may put some bees there and they may graze it with sheep. It's a secondary use, it's window dressing. I tossed talked to the 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 president of the Renewable Partners, Aaron, I can't remember his last name. They don't really have a plan. That's something that they have to do to put the solar project in. There, you know, when I first looked at this project, I'm a sheep producer as well as other things. And, you know, it'd be great if you could graze sheep and shaded ground. It would be happening all over the place. Grass likes the sun, just like the solar panels. That's where the nutrients come from, it's basic biology. But I think for this project where you do have a proof of concept, essentially demonstrating that this land is going to be used continuously for production, agricultural production. The details will all come into that management plan. I don't think the county planning staff has enough expertise. At a minimum, it should be the agricultural commissioner. But I think the planning commission should be very careful here and that essentially that continued use of for agriculture is a mitigation. And that will be developed in that agricultural management plan. And without the details of that, which might require a bigger spacing on the solar panels, which could render the sun feasible, you really don't have those details and you should be really careful. And I don't think you can make the finding of, you know, that this is consistent with the general plan with no net loss of ag land without that. And I think in a in essence, that mitigations to the to the management plan are are inconsistent with CEQA. And and so I I would ask that you require that management plan and demonstrate. There's some great pilot studies out there, but this project hasn't really done much to develop agricultural use and demonstrate that that is actually feasible and will still let this land remain productive. And just one more quick point. If there are no other feasible alternatives than putting this project on prime ag land, that would be in any remaining solar energy in the county. All right, any other solar energy projects in the county, if there's no feasible alternatives, they're all going to be on prime ag land. Because that's the finding you have to make that there are no feasible alternatives. So if there are any, then, you know, that's the big one. Are all these future projects going to go on prime ag land?
Thank you, Mary. Next caller is Daniel Chandler.
Hi, yes, thank you very much for this opportunity to talk to you. And I guess it's opportune that I am coming out and right after Merritt Perry. Because when I read through the file of letters, I was, I was sort of dismayed about what's what seems like anachronistic kinds of objections. And I wanted to try and put in context. I think we all know how important solar is, but I wanted to try and put it in context. And I apologize if I am going to say anything that you already have heard a thousand or even two times. So you you all do know that we only have about ten years to cut current emissions in half if we want to keep the earth the way it's been during the times that we've grown up in it. And that means there's going to have to be a massive shift to renewable power, primarily solar. I I don't know how many of you have read some of the the major plans for how we're going to achieve a grid, renewables, only renewable energy in the grid by twenty thirty five. But it is a really big project. And what's happening at the same time is that there are in in the last couple of years, have been a hundred laws and regulations passed by localities which limit solar and wind, renewable power. And at the same time, we're getting, there's a twenty twenty one, March twenty twenty one report from Yale that says the regulations for keeping oil and gas installations from damaging, hurting people nearby is not happening. The regulations are not adequate for that. And you may have heard a couple of weeks ago, the Kern County Board of Supervisors. I'm sorry.
You have thirty seconds left.
Okay. I I want to just say at the end here that there's no calculus in CEQA that gives you guidance on how to weigh the concerns of the opponents against the larger consequences of not approving projects like this, solar projects, as quickly as we can. So I. Support the project.
Thank you. Next caller is Kathy Chandler Klein.
Thank you. I'm a frequent recreational visitor to Blue Lake. Depending on the weather, I ride my bike out there about once a week and I really value the lovely views. I know that there are concerns about the changes in the in the views due to the solar array, which I certainly understand. But I want to say that for me, when I see the solar panels out there, hopefully, they will be quite beautiful. Because what I will see when I look at the solar array is an alternative to impending ravages of climate change. They will be beautiful compared to the destruction of forests and homes by increasing wildfires. They will be beautiful compared to flooded underground utilities and roads from sea level rise in Humboldt County. When I look at the solar array, I will see the face of my granddaughter and all our children and grandchildren who need a viable future. I think we are rapidly running out of time to make that possible. Therefore, I fully support this project. And I especially as sheep appreciate the attempt to graze sheep and pollinate bees. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller is Stephen Coleman.
Hi, thank you. My name's Stephen Coleman. I'm a, I've been a Blue Lake resident and homeowner for fifteen years. I was on the Blue Lake City Council from twenty twelve to twenty sixteen. And my daughter was born and raised here. I'm also a member of the Redwood Coast Mountain Bike Association. I ride the Hatchery Ridge Trails by the proposed project probably two or three times a week. I've been active with the Mad River Alliance, participated in many river cleanups. I, all summer, I'm up by the Hatchery, I go hiking there, have some of my favorite swimming holes. And so I want to say that I strongly support this project and I encourage you to approve it. Climate change is real and we don't have the luxury of hoping someone else will act to do something about it somewhere else. This use is consistent with the ag land designation. I think that's been made clear, developers working really hard to collate, co-locate ag uses with the project. Solar panels aren't reflective, so there won't really be any obscuring of the views of the surrounding hills. And I also just want to say, things like barns, cows and fences are really no more part of the natural landscape than solar panels. We've just learned to associate them with the rural setting. And so I think solar panels, we could also associate with, like the previous caller said, with a beneficial outlook and, you know, pride that the community is taking action on global climate change to make a world better for our children. People have talked about lots of industrial parcels in Humboldt, but as, you know, the developer and others have made clear, you also need a willing land owner of those parcels. And, you know, I don't know if any of those property owners have come. come forth to pursue solar projects. Probably most of them are wanting to do other things on that land, but this project, you know, even if those parcels do wanna be developed, this one wouldn't prevent any of those other parcels from being developed. And finally, just, you know, I'm, um, I'm sympathetic to the concerns of the people who live close. I, you know, some of the letters were talking about worrying about property values. I don't think property values in Blue Lake in this area are going down anywhere, going down in the foreseeable future, whether there's solar panels or not.
Thirty seconds.
You know, we're hardly gonna see them. So, okay, so wrap up. I just encourage you to support it. Uh, thank you. Thanks for the time.
Thank you. Uh, next caller is Karis. Are you there? Star six, there you go.
Yes, thanks. Um, yeah, my name is Karis Heronimo. Um, I'm, uh, resident of Arcata. Um, I'm speaking in support of the project, um, and I have a statement here mostly addressing aesthetic impact. I don't have any disagreement, um, over appreciating the aesthetics of this area. I ride my bike out to Blue Lake all the time. Um, but I would like to address the concerns about visual impacts since there were so many. Um, if we continue to say no to projects just because we don't want to see the equipment that's creating renewable energy, we're gonna continue our reliance on unsustainable resource extraction, continue polluting the view sheds we say we wanna preserve, and continue to exacerbate effects of climate change that ultimately would be so much worse on the eyes. Um, I would much rather see solar panels now versus seeing a devastated landscape in a decade or two, much like, uh, the previous caller Kathy was saying. Climate change is already shaping the world as we know it, and it will continue to have aesthetic impacts in addition to environmental, social, ecological ones. So by rejecting this project for aesthetic reasons, we're not avoiding impacts to environmental aesthetics. We are simply deferring them. Ultimately, a strategic and appropriate response to climate change will help to preserve the landscapes that we have the privilege of enjoying now. I also see windmills and solar panels, and I'm filled with hope. I think that it's a promising sight, and I know several other people in the community who feel similarly. Uh, I can understand the sentiment around this solar project and how it would change the view, but there is no perfect parcel. There are going to be sacrifices and compromises made with every development. At the end of the day, this is a terrific opportunity for the county to improve local energy resilience, and I support the adoption of the M and D prepared for this project. Thanks for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you. Uh, next caller is Tom Bray.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Um, I would like to, I'm gonna say that the, the site, of course, will work. Humboldt County has so many of these sites that will work like this. And we can cover up thousands of acres and still have, you know, land left over. But this is a, a precedent-setting project. Um, and it's not that I don't wanna see that something like this happen. It's, I just feel like the, the placement of it is not in a great location to start with. And that the county could be more creative, that there is just so many buildings and rooftops available in this county um, that we could start with, just doing something different, not doing the easy thing of covering up ag, ag land. There's, you know, there's cattle out there, but then there's also been crops out there. They grew quinoa on that very field a couple of years ago. Um, Humboldt County has fourth, is fourth, that, over four thousand square miles. That's that's bigger than Rhode Island and Delaware combined. You know, I mean, those are small states, but it's, it's a massive county. And so to say that this is the best spot we found in this whole county, I mean, it's, you know, I, I, I don't wanna make any accusations, but I just, I find that there's gotta be a better location. Um, and, you know, in the future, I, I would wanna see these projects going in, in a better location. The EPA has, you know, said that Humboldt County has identified over fifteen hundred acres of brownfields. And on those brownfields would be a great place to start. Um, so I'm just concerned about the precedent we're gonna set, 'cause as we go forward, we're gonna want to create more and more energy. And if we just keep covering up these beautiful lands and our ag lands for energy, then you know, when do we get to the brownfields and the rooftops when we run out of all our ag land? Um, anyway, that's, that's, so that's my comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next caller is Kit Mann.
Thank you. Um, I am also a proponent and a supporter of this project. Um, uh, much of what I was going to say has already been said. Um, Karis particularly, uh, hit several of the, uh, points that I wanted to talk about. I wanted to, uh, simply say a couple of things. One of the things we're not doing with this is destroying the agricultural land. The soil is not being destroyed um, as it is in perhaps forestry and, uh, logging operations. So we're continuing the, um, the agricultural capabilities of the soil. That's very important. About alternative sites, it's not a matter of either or. It's a matter of both and. We need to do this site, and we need to do every other site um, that we can find to do solar. As, uh, Jim Zolick pointed out, we, we've got a big job, and um, we just need to do it everywhere we possibly can. One of the more important things that I think should be considered is that with regard to precedence, we have already in Humboldt County, um, indicated a precedence with the Terigen project. Um, that really kind of said to the outside world, the outside energy developers, that maybe we weren't ready for alternative energy projects. If we were to reject this project as well, that would set a disastrous precedent in that large green energy projects would be very hesitant to come to Humboldt County because we are not a welcoming community, and that particularly concerns me. In short, the benefits of this project far outweigh the negatives, and we need to give it a try. We need to do it here and everywhere else. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller is Deborah Dukes. Deborah?
Hello. Um, I'm Deborah Dukes. I am a member of Three Fifty Humboldt. I'm also chair of the Eureka Energy Committee, and I'm, uh, calling in tonight as a private citizen of Humboldt County. I strongly support this project. I agree completely with what Kit Mann just said, and also with what Jim Solik and, uh, Kathy Chandler Klein said in terms of, um, we need to essentially put our money where our mouth is. I have solar panels on my own roof. I have done everything I can personally, yet that's not helping the schools, the hospitals, um, the public services in this county. And we can buy um, solar energy and other green energies from somebody else's backyard, and then we can gripe when the power shut-offs happen. This will be one more way that we can have in, energy independence. As far as the aesthetics are concerned, I personally seek out windmills, solar farms, and those are beautiful to me. I find that I consider those, um, just as much agricultural um, assets as pasture land or cornfields. Um, definitely more than cannabis grows. I personally find the aesthetics beautiful. I do a lot of walking and hiking around Humboldt County, and my heart just jumps whenever I see um, solar panels on somebody's roof or, um, in somebody's yard. So I strongly support this project. Um, I would be proud to have it in my backyard. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller is, uh, Martha Walden, please.
Um, yes, um, I'm also a frequent visitor to the area. And I hope that opponents of this project will come to accept it. A, a lot of people seem concerned about, um, using, um, ag land. But, um, no one can require, um, the owner of that field to grow quinoa or, or, um, any other crops. Um, besides, I think grazing sheep and, um, the pollinator project is not a bad return on ag land. It's a pretty good compromise, and, um, a future owner may grow crops there again. Um, I don't think that the visuals are going to, um, spoil the area in any way. Um, there's frequently, you know, all those cars that are parked alongside the road. Well, they're not particularly sweet, but, uh, we accept them because we know they're bringing people who want to fish and use the bike trail. And that's not gonna change. No one's gonna stop coming to the area for recreation because of that field having solar panels on it. Um, we have to consider the extremely important benefits of this project. I know that everyone knows this, you know, the climate emergency is very real. It's coming for our children's future. And, um, we have to cut our emissions in half by twenty thirty. That's only nine years from now. And I don't know how we're going to do this if we're always holding out for the perfect thing. We, we just don't have that luxury. Nothing's good enough, and meanwhile, we're totally dependent on fossil fuels. I think time is very short. I wish it weren't, but it is. So I hope that this project will be approved. Thank you.
Next caller, Nancy. Nancy here.
Hello, um, can you hear me? I guess. So, so, um, I too very much support the project. Um, don't wanna repeat um, uh, all the wonderful things people have said in support of the project and the, and the importance of supporting the project. Um, I do wanna, um, kind of address, um, people who wanted to be somewhere else and just kind of remind them that, um, the company spent two years, um, researching and, and locating this place. Um, and again, that, uh, the, the argument that they're converting agricultural land is just not um, the case, because they are using, um, it as a solar, um, farm and also for, um, uh, sheep and, um, for the bees. So, um, I did, the, the one thing I wanted to add, um, besides what other people have said, is that I wanted to express my appreciation to the landowners for being open to the project, and I understand, um, that it will help them financially, but more importantly, it will result in a significant contribution to our community's efforts to reduce our greenhouse gas emissions. Thank you.
Thank you. So, uh, is there any more public that would like to comment on this topic? I'm not seeing any more. Oh, there came up another hand. Haley, go ahead. Are you there, Haley?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yep, go ahead.
Okay. Uh, great. Um, hello, I'm also an Arcata resident, and I support this movement. Um, I also wanted to second a few of the statements made by Greece, uh, I think also Kathy and Deborah about aesthetics, and also Kit Mann, um, that we are not destroying the land, and it's a matter of both and, uh, which I really, I really like that statement. Um, and we need to act now. We don't have time, and that renewable energy is the future. And I took a look over some of the letters of opposition, and I wanted just to make a comment on a couple of things that Mr. Perry had made around aesthetics. Um, I know he, that he mentioned that on any given day, it's not uncommon to see more than thirty vehicles at any time parked along the entire top of the project site near the proposed access point. And I just wanna suggest that having all those cars and trucks parked alongside the road is, uh, an aesthetic problem in itself. And that I believe that aesthetics are, uh, personal, and in other words, that people have, um, have the same, have different opinions about what actually is attractive. Uh, as well as, uh, Mr. Perry made a comment that the M N D document did not include enough evaluation of aesthetic impact. Um, he mentioned that it's not mitigated, and environmental impact reports required to be completed under the CEQA, and the CECA guidelines state that a project in an area of moderate to high visual sensitivity with a project that would create a moderate to high visual change in landscape uh, in, in accordance with CEQA guidelines should be considered adverse and potentially significant impact. And I just wanna make a comment that if it meets the requirements, uh, then it is adequate. And really, anything on aesthetics, uh, is beyond that as an opinion. Uh, thank you for the opportunity to make this comment, and I really hope the commission approves the project. Thank you.
Haley. Anybody else who would like to comment on this before I close the public comment and bring the applicant back? Seeing done, I'm gonna close public comment. I'm gonna ask, uh, the applicant to come back on with us and address anything that you'd like to address that you heard from the public, maybe clear some things up.
Thank you, Commissioner. Um, the coexistence of solar and agricultural use is not a novel concept. It's been happening for many, many years, and it's proven to work. But we're doing more than just that. We're installing a pollinator plant habitat through twenty-five acres of the site, which will improve the local biodiversity and increase the health and quality of the soils on site. The incorporation of ag into the project or the pollinator plant meadow is just a small part of the project. We've been at this a really long time. As I mentioned earlier, over two years, we've had hundreds of meetings and discussions with local community leaders, educational institutions, nonprofits, farmers, and tribes. However, I think the project, uh, is better for it, uh, which is why we've had over forty-five letters of support and uh, overwhelming amount of support through the call-ins that we've had this evening from local residents uh, supporting the project. Uh, the project will power, uh, twelve hundred homes locally per year. We heard concerns about uh, the county's ability to import electricity. This is homegrown renewables that will be consumed at the source. And the project is late stage and ready to start construction, uh, in the second quarter of this year. Uh, the near-term impact on climate change, it requires, uh, local solutions, and, and this really is an opportunity for the county to be part of the solution. Um, thank you, and appreciate your time and consideration as it relates to this project.
Thank you. Any questions from the commission while Aaron's still here before we deliberate on this? Uh, C one panelist, Mike, go ahead.
So a couple of questions. Whoop, hold on. Yep, okay, I'm unmuted. Okay, thank you. Um, couple of questions come to mind, um, throughout the, um, comments and some of the discussion here, uh, from the applicant. Uh, two things are coming straight to my mind right at the first here is about the noise of the inverters um, and housing. Um, is it outlined somewhere in the plan design here? I've been looking at the, um, the renewable properties, um, grid here that shows the outline. Um, and it's not coming through on my screen there that much, but it's on, uh, page twelve fourteen. fourteen of the um, uh, first part of the um, design here. Um, and I'm trying to find where that is. Um, is, are the inverters going to be housed in a, in, inside any building or not? Um, is my first question. And, and if not, uh, why is that? And then number two, uh, the talk about the power poles um, for the visual part there, is there any consideration about undergrounding any of that?
I was, I was taking notes, Commissioner Newman. Uh, with regards to your question on the noise of the inverters, uh, as I, I had in my presentation and is was in the um, health and safety report that was prepared as part of the application. The decibel level of the inverters is thirty-seven D B A when you're standing near the inverter. So that's equivalent to a cycling refrigerator. Uh, the inverters are not going to be in a housed unit. Uh, as, as the director board mentioned, there's no buildings or structures here. There, there is some equipment located on the ground. Um, um, and the inverters are hundreds of feet away from any um, nearby residence. So noise associated with the inverter is, is not a concern.
So they would not be heard at all outside of the perimeters of this project?
Correct. If you were standing within the project, um, near an inverter, you can hear it, but it's similar to a cycling refrigerator. So if you're, you know, a hundred feet away from a refrigerator, you're, you're not going to hear that. It's um, it's too far away.
So I just wanted to make sure um, outside of the perimeter of this parcel that the project is on, there will be no humming noise or anything like that?
Correct, correct. The, the noise levels associated with this use are negligible when you're standing within the array. And in the instance of this array in particular, as shown on the site plan, we are hundreds of feet away from residences and uh, at our nearest distance, seventy-five feet away from the public right of way.
Okay, all right, number two.
Yes, your second question about the undergrounding of the uh, power poles. So the project has been designed um, with the interconnecting utility to use overhead poles, which is common for a facility like this. Uh, all of the existing electrical infrastructure in this neighborhood is done overhead and up and down Hatchery Road. So those poles are simply an extension of the existing line and landing that um, line onto our site with some of the equipment used to connect the array to the grid.
Thank you. Uh, Noah, you are next up.
So would I just?
Oh, I'm sorry, Mike, I thought that was.
I was just trying to unmute myself, number one.
Um, so that would make it undesirable then for this project then if that was to be uh, requirement?
Yeah, it would trigger a large uh, redesign process with the utility and um, we're, we're through that part of the process with uh, with P G E. Um, that would delay the project uh, for quite some time if, if that were a requirement. Um, you know, this type of interconnection is common in um, solar arrays such as this. We're doing a standard connection to the grid.
Right, thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Uh, Noah, you're up.
Hi, uh, thank you. And yes, I do have a couple of uh, questions that I would love to get Mr. Halimeter to address. Um, one, I think I have three questions. I'll try to be brief. One is, does your agreement with the uh, property owner allow you to um, plant screening plants or trees along the perimeter of the parcel near the road? Um, I mean, we've, we've discussed planting um, shading plants right at the barbed wire, which I think makes sense and could be done as part of the installation, but uh, it would be nice to have maybe not a, not a continuous screen or hedge, but to just have some sort of visual uh, breakup along the roadway. I think that's just one thought I have. And I wanted to know if your agreement uh, would allow for that.
Thank you, Commissioner Levy. Just to confirm, is your question around putting um, some vegetation along the southern uh, side of the array adjacent to the path that uh, is frequented for um, the river access? Or is your question around another area or location?
Well, I, I guess my, my, looking at the site plan, it looks like that's one, but there's, you know, a couple of other places along the road into that uh, end of the road that come closest to the array and might be a suitable place to plant bushes and trees. I'm not even, I, I'm just wondering if, if your agreement, if, if that could be done or if that's part of your plan to do any sort of vegetation screening along roadways, along selected uh, portions of the roadway?
Got it. Yeah, so it's currently contemplated. There are no plans to install any, any vegetative buffering. Uh, as I, as I mentioned earlier, most of the Hatchery Road is naturally shielded with vegetation. And the array is set back quite a bit from the property line. Um, typically when it comes to visual aesthetics, there's uh, you know, setbacks to um, uh, to mitigate that or um, in some instances vegetation. Uh, but as we heard this evening, I think a lot of people uh, enjoy the aesthetics of the solar panels. And so it has not been our plan to install any vegetation, um, given the large amounts of natural foliage uh, on site.
Great, um, that's, that sounds good. Um, secondly, on the matter of, I, I guess I just want, I, I raised this question earlier. Um, I, as I've said, I'm, I'm really interested in seeing the potential for this uh, project to be a proof of concept in some ways, certainly locally a proof of concept for how we can locate solar projects with various forms of agriculture, including grazing. And on that point, um, my question is, is this, as the permit is currently written, could you make the decision as part of your agricultural management plan to elevate the stems or, or the pivot arms? I'm not quite sure what the term would be, but to elevate those for a portion of the panels um, to allow for potential future uses underneath. And, and I, I want to ask that also both about what the permit allows in, in light of you know, avoiding visual impacts as they are perceived to be a visual impact. But also I'm, I'm wondering if it will work in terms of the barbed wire fencing? Because I, I, I wasn't contemplating that in my notion. And you've described a perimeter fence. So can you explain how that could coexist with grazing um, within the solar array?
Yep, absolutely. Uh, I would defer to staff on the limitations uh, in our use permit. But as I interpreted, there would be no limitation around elevating a certain area or section of the array. I should have mentioned this earlier, but um, those of you that are familiar with the site, there's a natural slope. Um, kind of looking from the road towards where the river is. And what that actually naturally provides is for some elevation change because the tracking system, those panels are um, have to be straight, they have to be in a line. And so the post length will change as the topography slopes. You're already going to naturally have some of that effect that, that you're looking for. Um, but I'm, I, you know, my, my understanding is there'd be no limitation there. Um, uh, as it relates to the barbed wire fencing, uh, the fence that is currently spec'd as part of the plan is a six-foot tall chain link fence with one foot of barbed wire. So it's at the top. It's a standard um, you know, perimeter um, security fence. And so that would be able to coexist with, with animal grazing as the small livestock is not anticipated to, to jump that high and get caught in the barbed wire.
I, I, I see. So just to be clear, the fence would be keeping the livestock outside of the array. They wouldn't be able to graze within the array, correct?
There, there'd be two, two livestock as it relates to the agricultural use that we're committing to. It's sheep grazing within the array.
Okay.
And so that sheep grazing is within the array and also actually um, to Commissioner Mulder's uh, comment, it provides natural uh, vegetation management as well. The sheep eat the grass and so it kind of has a dual purpose. And then, as I mentioned earlier, the landowner who currently grazes cattle uh, on the site will continue to graze his cattle on the areas of the site where the array is not occupying it. So uh, they'll come, you know, from the north um, uh, and then they can come down into that area where the wetland is and all the setbacks is the, where the cattle will graze.
Okay, thanks. That, that gives me um, a, a clear idea. Thank you.
Uh, next is Thomas.
So for the applicant, just to follow up, uh, it was said that the use of herbicides were going to be used to get native plant uh, pollinators um, established. Is the type of herbicide that's going to be used, are you knowing what type of herbicide that is going to be? And the, the reason I'm so keen on the herbicide is because we have to claim no loss of ag land. So if, in, in my opinion, if you use the wrong herbicides, it could lose ag land. That's just my personal opinion.
Yeah, so I can't tell you the herbicide right here, right now, but what I can tell you is we have partnered with the Pollinator Partnership. Um, they're a national nonprofit uh, that focuses on enhancing um, uh, the, the, the habitat for pollinators throughout the United States. And we've submitted a pollinator habitat implementation plan as part of this project. And they will be the ones overseeing the installation of the pollinator plant meadow. And so um, you know, i- it's important to them to preserve the soil quality. We've partnered with them on a lot of our projects um, throughout northern California. Um, and, and so, you know, that, that's what I know about it today. Um,
Okay, that, I mean, that answers my question good enough. Thank you for that. I appreciate that. I'm good.
Well, Melanie, you're next.
Thank you, Chair. Uh, yeah, I just wanted to um, address some of the questions posed to us and comments from the public. Um, in terms of the location, uh, the CEQA was very specific on that. So it's very location based and that's why everything is discussed under something called an environmental setting. Because the same project in two different locations has completely different impacts associated with them simply because the environmental setting is different. And we are um, for an M N D, all of that is done by the time we see the project. And so we don't take that into account. We assume the alternatives were discussed beforehand. And we have to judge the project solely on uh, the impacts, potential impacts that may be associated with the project in its current setting. So um, as far as that setting goes, uh, you know, it is ag land. And so there is a potential for far more herbicide to be used if it were used in many typical um, agricultural applications. And on a yearly basis, rather than just for the first couple of years, probably maximum until native plants get established. Uh, likewise, there would probably be more traffic associated with um, another alternative agricultural application, for example. And then um, in terms of aesthetics, so looking at some of the resource categories now. So aesthetics, of course, is very subjective. Uh, one of the kind of classic um, lectures that we give in forestry is we show the students uh, a picture of a clear cut and a picture of a farm and say, which one looks better? And over ninety percent of the students, even in forestry, often choose the farm. And, you know, they are the same thing. It depends on what you do with it after. And arguably, reforestation uh, restores the landscape if it's done properly as much as a farm does. So um, I think a lot of our younger people are starting to associate um, solar projects, you know, with positive outcomes, much like we do with, say, a picture of a farm versus a clear cut. We, the reason we choose it, of course, is because we associate it with so many benefits. And I think people are more and more moving to associating that with benefits. And so I don't think we need to look at things like covering it up with trees or asking the applicant to bury lines which would interfere with the ag land far more than the, any kind of aesthetic benefit we might get out of it. Because then we're, we're touching the soil. And one of the great things about the project is that it pretty much leaves the ag land as ag land um, right now. So for those reasons, I don't really see that there's an aesthetic impact here. Um, in terms of any other impacts, it's my personal opinion that noise and light are the two more important impacts that we tend to see. And I don't find those here um, for this project. And you know, as one of the callers said, it's not our job to talk about the benefits of solar energy. Um, so we just have to judge the project on its potential impacts. And for, so for the uh, reasons I've just stated, I am very happy to make the findings for this project. I think it is a very good project. And I think there are very few environmental impacts associated with the project. That's all.
Brian Mitchell.
Mister Chairman, we're in the middle of a climate emergency and I would like to make a motion to that effect. I'd like to move that we adopt the mitigated negative declaration for the project. I'd like to move that we adopt the required findings for approval of the conditional use permit and approve the Renewable Properties LLC conditional use permit as recommended subject to the recommended conditions.
I'll second.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? See no hands?
Oh, yeah. Just for clarification, that is the revised resolution that was submitted today.
That's correct.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. I'll ask for a roll call vote, please.
Alan Bondio.
Yes.
Thomas Mulder.
Yes.
Noah Levy.
Yes.
Mike Newman.
No.
Peggy O'Neil.
Yes.
Brian Mitchell.
Yes.
And Melanie McAvoy.
Yes.
Motion carries six one. Thank you very much, everybody. That was a good discussion. All right.
Thank you.
So moving on, I believe that was our last item for, for tonight. So unless there's any other discussion, anything you want to bring up, Director, or anything like that?
There's nothing more that I would bring up. I thank you for uh, the special meeting on the twenty-second and uh, that'd be it.
All right, thank you. Well, anything for me, commissioners? Not? I'll close the meeting and say we're adjourned and we'll see everybody in two weeks.
All right, thank you.
Bye, everyone.
Bye.